This is the multi-purpose complex committee final report to Mason City City Council. I'll call the meeting to order, let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Solberg, who should be here imminently. Can we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
A second.
A second. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, well number one is the presentation of the report from the multi-purpose center task force. What we're gonna do here is we're gonna give them the opportunity to present, hold all our questions here to the end, and then we'll do as many rounds of questions we need to. We'll just start with a five-minute round, three-minute round, and as we need, we'll be more than happy to extend debate to make sure we have everything vetted. Because why we have you guys here, we want to get as much information as possible. I would say for Mason City citizens, this committee has really done an excellent job. I've heard most of the members talk about how well they've worked together vetting the demand that does exist, what a facility if it were going to be built would look like. So we should just be very happy that we have citizens in our community that will volunteer as much time as you folks have been willing to volunteer and be as thorough as you have. So I'm gonna, well first before we start, let the record reflect that Councilmember Solberg has arrived and is attending. I'm gonna introduce the chairman of the committee, Mr. Tim Latham, and I'll let you do introductions for your committee, and we'll open it up.
Great, I'd like to introduce our committee.
And let's make sure everybody can hear our guests and ask to return. Right back. Yeah, Mr. Ebers, you on too?
I'd like to introduce our committee. Our committee, as you were saying, mayor worked very hard, we got together quite often, and we had a great committee. I wanna compliment this committee because it's one of the fighter committees that I have worked with. Everyone respected each other's opinions, and we worked together and come to this final report. I'd like to introduce Randy Ebers, Sue Ormer, Mo Butler, Mike Deegan, Sonny Odom, who couldn't be here tonight, Sonny's in New York, couldn't get his bike back in time, and Jerry Bonson. So with that said, I'd like to just kind of, we're each gonna take a section of time and kind of talk about what we feel, where we were, what we did, how we got there. The committee's goal, as you were saying, if a building were to be built, who were the potential users based upon future current needs that are unmet? Estimated size of complex, its benefits, and its challenges in building it, and its supporting it. So with that said, I'd like to start by turning it over to Jerry Bonson, he's gonna talk about the ice part of the facility, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Let's make sure Mr. Bonson has a mic.
Thank you, gentlemen. Why am I making this presentation? Well, I've had 25-plus years involved in hockey, at Mason City youth hockey, I've had 14 years, and I had every job out there except secretary. I was the arena manager and arena scheduler. In the Isle High School Hockey League, I had 16 years, I had every position there except the commissioner. I was a scheduler there for several years. We had 12 teams which had 275 games in the season that ran from November 1st to March 1st, with the week of Christmas off, and we could only have games on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It was a challenge. When the teams went out of town for the long weekend, they would leave on Friday at 2:00 PM and get back at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock Sunday evening. It made a long weekend for the boys, too. There were no girls, by the way. When the people came here, they would come here from Dubuque, Waterloo, Sioux City, Sioux Falls, Lincoln, Carney, Nebraska, Kansas City, Omaha, Des Moines, Ames, Cedar Rapids, and Quad Cities, that was the size of the league. And when these people came, they brought their families and their friends, and so it did bring additional revenue into the city of Mason City. Who are the major users? The major users would be the junior eighteen, Waldorf, which is putting in hockey this year, they are waiting to see what Mason City does before they decide if they're gonna build up there. We have Mason City youth hockey, which includes the high school and the junior varsity, and they are the largest group with around 300 participants. The figure skaters, the men's senior hockey, we have public skate, we would like to have several of them because this pays back the city and the area for what they do for us. Okay, the ice users and dryland users. Would require a building that is 60,000 square feet, has two sheets of ice which are 100 feet by 200 feet, and that's Olympic size, that would seat 2,500 in one and 2,000 in the other, with 2,500 portable seats which could be put over the ice. That would be a total of 5,000 seats. I don't think anybody in this area has that many seats, and this one, we could bring some big shows in if we had that. We would have room for offices, one large meeting room, which could be divided into six smaller rooms which would be soundproof. We'd have locker rooms and exercise room. Now, dryland events, water dryland events, that's where we've covered the ice, with a material that does not let the cold come through, and it takes about two hours to put that down. With that long with affordable stage, you could have concerts, comedy shows, skater shows, family shows, large exhibits. You could have a circus with high-wire acts, and if you remove the boards, you could have the ice capades or something similar to that. With the boards back on, you could have sports, you could have arena football, WWE wrestling or something equivalent, amateur wrestling, regional basketball tournaments, because you could put three basketball court courts on one hockey, which was covered. You'd have volleyball tournaments and hockey tournaments. Hockey tournaments bring a large number of people in town, and this of course adds to the people staying, eating, and shopping, and the businesses that benefit from that. The major users pay the rent, that major ice user would pay the rent. Then you'd have your concessions, you'd have beer and wine sales, junior egg games, and other events. You'd have admissions and skate runs at the public skate. You would have the pro shop, and you'd have the dryland users, and plus the people that have tournaments. Why do I stress tournaments? During a tournament when their child is not playing, a lot of the parents go shopping or they go out to eat, so that is helping the peripheral businesses. What is the value to the youth? It gives them a place to go skate, attend concerts, and then also the adults. The 10 concerts show so many types, sporting events, dryland events, and many other events. Can a dollar value be placed on this? Yes, it can, but it would take a professional person to do it, and I'm not qualified for that. I was speaking with a cardiologist a couple weeks ago, he hadn't heard of this, and when I told him about it, he said he was for it 100% because he could see two things, one, it would give something for our youth to do, and the second thing is that it would give businesses that wanted to come to Mason City another thing, another asset to look at. Reiterate again that we need to build for tomorrow and not for today, so we need two ice sheets. I can see only positive results from this venture. Thank you very much for your attention.
I'd like to pass that back down to Mr. Latham.
I guess I kind of skipped there, I forgot Randy, so we'll go to Randy, she's gonna talk about the project approach. I'd just like to add to Jerry's, the reason for two sheets of ice, you might wonder, why do we need two sheets of ice? Two sheets of ice, as we went through our, going to the different places that we went, talking with the different stakeholders, we found that if we were to add all of the entities that kind of showed interest in coming to Mason City to play hockey as one part of this component, it was real important that two sheets would be needed. One sheet would not cover the time that would be needed, and I'd like to, we emphasized the fact that we can cover that other second sheet and use it for many other things. So it's unlimited what we can do there. Randy?
So our committee was, our committee was presented with many materials at our first meeting from a feasibility study that was completed by Compass in 2003. Mason City hired this industry professional to be chairman.
Hold on.
Okay. Our committee was presented with many materials at our first meeting.
Let's switch mics. It's obviously not working.
Sound better?
Much better.
Okay. Our committee was presented with many materials at our first meeting from the feasibility study that was completed by Compass in 2003. Mason City hired this industry professional to determine whether or not our city could support a multi-purpose center at that time. While reviewing the work this company had done and looking at the timeline we're faced with to prepare this report, we determined that our most logical approach to the task before us was to use the basic model this company had prepared and update information to reflect present-day issues. One of the pieces we updated was the public use survey. We wanted to be sure as many people received the survey as possible, so we sent a survey out with each water bill and created the survey monkey link that was promoted by many organizations and individuals through email and social networking sites. The survey monkey link helped us to maximize the return of the surveys and helped the city staff tally and compile results from the 1,746 surveys that were returned. We chose a two-pronged focus for the stakeholders. First, we modified the original survey and the list of potential stakeholders that this survey was to be mailed out to. We requested that the surveys be sent back for our records, and then each stakeholder on our list was invited to attend an interview session to give their input on a proposed multi-purpose center. We held two full days of interview sessions and received very good feedback on what needs were currently being met and what items our community could benefit from. These meetings were very informative and a large part of how we came to our conclusion of what the multi-purpose center could support. One of the biggest needs that came from these meetings, which we've heard from Jerry and Tim, was that ice was a big need in the community. Updated ice facilities and more ice availability specifically. So we decided to schedule site visits at the Waterloo and Outerly ice arenas to help us to turn on a possible complex size for the needs of our community. And while in Waterloo, we also took the opportunity to visit the Waterloo Convention Center and talk with their convention and visitors bureau to help us determine if more convention space could be utilized in Mason City. I'll now turn it over to Mike Deegan, who will talk about the multi-purpose activity space.
Thank you, Randy. After conducting months of surveys, interviews, and site visits, we of the task force determined that there are various needs for a multi-purpose facility. The main need we found was a facility to house our Parks and Rec department. Parks and Rec department currently leases office space from local business and is looking at future lease increases over the next several years. They're forced to find local gym space to host various indoor activities that they are currently able to offer. We found this would be a proven challenge for the department, causing them to reschedule, postpone, or cancel many events due to availability of various facilities. The Parks and Rec department has also limited the amount and variety of activities they can schedule due to inadequate facility space. It requires parents with multiple children to transport them to various locations in the city, with one maybe playing at Rose Valley while the other one playing at John Adams', and having to choose between which activity they would like to attend. In order to solve this issue, we as a task force determined that a facility should be constructed to include a size of 22,000 square feet. That this multiple facility should have a multiple-use floor similar to not have to host various events. We found this facility should include movable features that would accommodate visitors as well as utilize as many spaces as possible. This facility would also hold 3,500 square foot of office space for the recreation department as well as bathroom facilities. This facility should be large enough on its floor to house three full-size basketball courts, but could also use various recreational activities as well. Some of the other activities we found that could be used indoors would be indoor soccer, tennis, volleyball, archery, tumbling, and wrestling, to name a few. This facility would also allow the Parks and Rec department to become more efficient in scheduling of events, as well as offer a site to host outdoor events that are unable to be held due to our inclimate weather in North Iowa. The department would also be able to expand its program to offer more activities to enter a larger group of individuals. Department is currently limited to offering of the adult programs because they cater more to the children. Department communicated to us they'd be offered various tournaments to bring in outside visitors to our area as well. They can currently have small tournaments but are unable to host larger tournaments because they all require a facility under one roof. With research and people with contact, the opinion of this task force at Mason City and the surrounding area would benefit greatly from such a facility, would also add to the quality of life of our citizens as well as bringing visitors to the town that would normally not see. Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna talk about another component that the committee's lead should be considered, and that is actively recruiting a hotel that would be attached to the complex. As a potential tool in this recruitment process, because they feel that attached hotel would greatly enhance this facility, but also too, they want to have the community and the city look at having an indoor destination water park, and in order to do that, the committee believes the city should complete an indoor destination water park feasibility study. Now, depending upon the results, the study would be used to recruit a hotel developer in which the hotel would build an indoor destination water park in addition to the hotel property. So just to kind of give you an idea, what is a destination water park? Our research indicates an indoor destination water park is generally about 30,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet, and they are designed to attract and accommodate all ages from infants all the way to the adults. A destination water park is not the same as a hotel with water features. A hotel with water features tends to be a pool with a slide and a few water amenities, and typically are 20,000 square feet or less. These hotels with water amenities attract ages, infants to about 12 years. Thus, they're limiting the attractiveness and the potential pool of a diverse age group to bring to that facility. Our research indicates there's quite a few advantages of an indoor water park with an ice facility and a multi-purpose facility. For example, it was shared with us that indoor water parks do not perform well on their own. Successful water parks tend to have other amenities, and the committee was told that an ice arena would highly complement an indoor destination water park. One of the numerous pros of an ice facility connected with an indoor water park is that as the ice facility pushes the heat out of the complex, this heat can be captured to heat the water parks. When researching sustainability of a destination indoor water park, we learned that parks that are 30,000 square feet or less tend to struggle because they are not destination parks, just hotels with water features. Destination water parks tend to make a profit, and there is a higher rate of failure for those water parks that did not complete a feasibility study. Our research indicated the potential cost of an indoor water park feasibility study is a minimum of $15,000. Just to reiterate, depending on the results, the city would use the study to recruit a hotel developer in which the hotel would build the indoor destination water park in addition to the hotel facility. With that being said, we're gonna pass it over about some potential things to consider.
Potential challenges to a facility such as we looked at. Our committee, our committee basically assessed the worthiness of a multi-purpose center, otherwise known as an event center, taking into consideration size, scope, and cost. A feasibility study is not available to define costs, this would require architects and others. During the past five months, we looked at facilities in communities larger than Mason City and also smaller than Mason City. We determined that we were limited to produce a definite size and cost. As for the feasibility of putting up a facility, that would depend on the city council deciding to go forward or not, and an eventual vote on the issue if the project does move forward. Following are some thoughts about potential challenges of moving forward with such a project. Education about the project is vital to understanding the need, the benefits it can and will bring to our community. We need accurate and useful information in order to understand the total project and whether it is feasible, and something that can and will be supported by the council and the voting public as a major asset. The communities we visited considered their facilities a major asset and worthy investment. This was brought out in our meetings with their representatives verified in their annual budgets. As has been presented, we took a 2003 survey and modified same for our use to get comments about this project. I believe the cost for that survey was $41,000. The cost for us doing our assignment was less than $150 and limited staff time. Multi-purpose facilities generally do not pay for themselves and need help with ongoing operations and capital expenses. However, they can also be strong economic drivers and generate revenue into the community. The challenge for a project of this size and scope is like all projects, money. Comments that have been set, build the facility without increasing taxes. The city has limited bonding capacity, state funding is very limited. There are numerous possible funding options, such as general obligation bonds, otherwise known as GO bonds, sales tax levy, project revenue, permissive tax, private donations, hotel developer, lodging tax, collaboration among cities and the surrounding county, restaurant tax, tax certification, tax and criminal financing districts, public and private partnerships. We interviewed the company VenueWorks, it's a national company headquartered in Ames, Iowa. They are dedicated to meeting the challenges and opportunities of these types of facilities in mid-sized markets. They create a customized business plan for each individual community's needs. Some closing thoughts expressed by VenueWorks. Why are you building this facility? Every decision you make is a marketing decision. Manage your expectations. Again, if the project is to go forward, education is the backbone and absolutely essential for success. And I drew the short straw for Sonny, who can't be here tonight. So we'll talk a little bit about return on investment. A facility would generate revenue for the city's general fund, including sales tax on concessions, ticket sales, et cetera, from all events. A local option sales tax generated from visitor spending at events and activities of the facility would cause the influx of dollars to be most visible in areas such as increased sales tax in restaurants, bars, and attractions, increased retail sales in neighboring areas bordering the facility, lodging tax from rooms generated by events, activities of the facility, the transfer of about $40,000 currently used for the Mason City Recreation Department activity rental space and office space, and as has been said before, this will undoubtedly increase over time. The facility could serve as a catalyst for other economic development, thus potential for new or increased, new and increased property tax generation from the new improved business, retail dining, et cetera. The facility should keep dollars local and decrease the amount of dollars leaving town as noted by our survey. Some statistics include 39.8% leave town for one to three times a year to attend an event, 20.7% leave town four to seven times a year to attend events, 31.5% spend $101 to $250 per trip to attend events outside of Mason City, 19.4% spend $51 to $100 per trip to attend out-of-town events. A facility could also enhance the quality of life for local residents by the opportunity to host and attend sporting and entertainment events that might otherwise not have been available. Again, one last time, educating everyone is the key to the future of this project.
Some additional thoughts as we went through our project here is, in our committee's talking to different entities who came and visited with us, two of them being the Mason City School, the Mason City Y. And we had committee, we had people coming from different groups, and some had concerns as to how they may affect them or how they may not affect them, and I think we discussed that pretty well, and I think everybody kind of left feeling pretty good. Two thoughts in our talk was, one of the things that we thought about is talking with the schools. The school and the Y community had a great need for an indoor Olympic-sized pool. The pool at the Y, unless I get corrected, is not an Olympic-sized pool, and the pool at John Adams' is not. I think the only Olympic-sized pool we have is the outdoor pool here in Mason City. However, the group did not include this in the proposal since the audience was not a big group to talk about that, so it's something we think that should be looked at possibly further, but not something that we're recommending. The committee discussed in greatly meeting and convention space that is attached to lodging facility in Mason City, or like. The group determined there seems to be an interest in new updated space, wanting nicer facilities and potentially larger spaces. Part of the committee did not witness a great need. The group did, did not include this in the proposal since if there is a need, the consensus was that private entities will be moving, will move forward to accommodate this need versus private developers stepping forward to build, you know, where they wouldn't step forward to build an ice arena or multi-activity center. The committee did not include construction costs or operating costs in the file proposal due to limited amount of resources and expertise available to this group. The committee is recommending city staff to research these further, using industry experts to provide appropriate information. It is the understanding of the committee that there should be some minimal cost to obtain this information. I guess we're moving that you'll move forward and move this forward to staff, to what would get prices, and what it would cost, and that we really emphasize the fact, I know that each of you probably are thinking, two sheets of ice, that's a big thing. That is a very important factor when we talk to all the different entities and the time that would be used and the different things that can be done with that. You know, so many, so many things can happen on the other sheet of ice, and the idea of having 2,500 on one side, 2,000 on the other, we felt is very important so that we can have all kinds of different events, we can have industry come in and have their meetings and different things. So in some ways, we still have a little bit of convention space. I guess we'd all like to thank you for listening tonight, and I guess one of the things that was asked of me is, how does the committee feel as a group? And I'd just like to read what we all came to a conclusion. As a committee, we're unified in one unanimous vote that if a building were to be built, this report reflects the direction we think would best serve the community in North Iowa area. And again, I'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Latham, and thank you very much to all of you. And I know that the communication that you guys had and the time you gave with your stakeholders that you visited with was quite impressive, so thank you very kindly. Alright, we're gonna open this up for questions, and like I said, we'll just do a five-minute round, three-minute round, extend debate as the, and what we'll do is, when the members have the time, we'll just address the questions to the chair, Mr. Latham, and he can act like Don you and spread it around or answer yourself or whatever it is. Let's open it up anyway.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody as well because I know how much time you guys have put into it. I have one question, and Mayor, if I may, show a hand to the committee members, I have one question. If this were to move forward, how many of you committee members think it should go to a public voter referendum? It's definitely gonna impact the taxpayers, how many think it should go to a referendum?
I guess, Jeff, I think it's a tough question, depends on how it's gonna be paid for. If it's not gonna be paid with tax dollars, then I think you could move forward with it, that's just my opinion. But otherwise, yes, I would raise my hand. But otherwise, yes, I would raise my hand.
Well, I think we know that it's going to need some city help. It's not going to fund itself. There's going to be operating costs and such as that, so it is going to affect the actual taxpayer itself. So, I mean, that needs to be communicated to the persons. And they say, yeah, it should go up to a vote to decide whether they want to support this kind of a...
Three think you should and three don't have anything. Is that the concrete? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aristers. Mr. Nelson?
I have fifteen questions, but I can't get them all in fifteen minutes, so I've narrowed it down a little bit. I didn't hear a big difference in, you didn't talk about location.
We, we didn't feel that we were, we, we are able to make that decision, Don. That's, that's beyond our scope of what we were asked to do. And also, you know, we don't have that expertise.
A lot of emphasis was on ice arenas. And I've made phone calls too and got surveys from Iowa and Southern Minnesota. And you made a trip, I believe, to Albert Lee, correct?
Yes.
They have two ice arenas. What was, what was the bottom line on them two ice arenas? Did the taxpayers have to subsidize, by the way?
They do, they do subsidize it, Don, to, to the figure. And, you know, I guess I'd just be, I'd just be guessing off my brain, but I want to say to the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, three fifty million dollars. Ice arenas for the most part, I think if you do study, I've done somewhat, are, are, they do not fund themselves. They're highly subsidized by the community or, yeah, I'm sure they do.
Could I, could I finish, finish there? What I would say is, in Albert Lee, we're talking apples and oranges. That facility is probably thirty, forty years old. It's, 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 it's meant as an ice arena. There's no other, it's really tough to make any other purpose of that. I would also add, the people that we spoke with at the ice arena said that, that three hundred and some thousand people in Albert Lee really feel that it's an asset to their community and have not had a problem, you know, funding that.
Yeah, I don't question the asset of an ice arena, just that I'm really disappointed though when only three of you raised your hands about the referendum. You know, we're talking about taxpayers' dollars here tonight and in the future. Don't you think the taxpayers in Mason City should have the right to go to the voting booth and vote yes or no on a project? And again, I know you didn't get into the cost, but we've had two presentations by two architects here in this community and the figure is about fifteen million. Now, you talked about a lot of things. You talked about the water park, I don't, that was mentioned in the, the architects. Ice arenas, hotel, crock, you know, poker, you know, somebody come in. By the way, I, you know, I thought we were hotel saturated. Recreational offices, conventions, you know, a lot was mentioned here tonight upon the possible facilities. And, and so, if all of those things are reality, you're talking a lot more than fifteen million dollars. The community has no growth and hasn't, I think significant growth in Mason City was nineteen sixty, so it's been considerable now. And I, I don't think, my opinion again, all of my opinion, a multipurpose center. We're after good-paying jobs is what we keep here in our community. Good-paying jobs, bring jobs to us, am I correct? Growth, eventually you grow. Multipurpose center isn't growing either.
Can, can I respond?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I agree, we need good jobs, but for, the one thing I think you, you have to look at, Don, is you have to look at our area as a whole. And you, you guys all keep talking about regionalism, you know, and, and you talk, we talk about the communities around us. Communities around us are getting jobs. For whatever reason, companies are going there. I, I don't know why over Mason City. I'm sure that we're, we're actively after those. You know, we are stagnant, I think, but I think that, you know, one of the things I've learned in businesses, you have to spend money to make money. And every time I spend money in a business venture, it seems to pay off for me.
And another question I have, and I, I, I mean, is, we're talking about entertainment, I think was mentioned. Do you, do you, how that's going to affect the NIAC Performing Arts Center, the SURF, if you start bringing entertainment of that? You know, you're going to get in and beyond what they're getting because you have that capacity. It won't affect if we have an existing facility, which would be another concern I have. We have two great facilities, we're, you know, mile out of town or two and ten miles away, which is regional, you know, very, very regional.
Can I respond on that?
Yeah.
Well, I, I happen to go to probably six to eight events at NIAC yearly. It's a great facility and, but it's not everybody's cup of tea. When I go there, the, there's not young people at, at most of the, the events that are there. The average age is probably forty plus that, that buy tickets and go to the events. So, I'm not sure that they're, in my opinion, again, my opinion, I'm not sure that they're, they're at NIAC, they're hitting everyone's, what do they want? You know, they, when they brought in Willie Nelson, the place was packed. When they brought in Vince Gill and Amy Grant, the place was packed with younger people. I think that, you know, there's, there's an opportunity for more events as far as the SURF, the SURF is a creature of its own. You know, they, they're, it's a great facility and I think they'll be great no matter what if we build this or not and there's other events brought in. Just my opinion.
Well, if you five minutes, at least that most of it's ours.
I understand, we'll, we'll keep, and we'll keep...
Go ahead, go ahead.
And we'll get them, because they can't see the clock.
I'll ask you a word question after that.
Anybody else?
Mr. Trump, please. I've got some, some questions on the scope. With the recommendation that you have in front of us, would the total, would the facility total be eighty-two thousand square feet?
Eighty-two thousand.
Sixty of that would be ice?
Sixty ice and twenty-two rec, rec, multi-purpose shoes.
The sixty thousand that's ice, would those two sheets of ice basically be in the same room?
They would be in the same, the same building, same room, yes.
Okay, and when we talk about covering ice, are we talking about covering one sheet or both sheets?
We're talking about covering one sheet. Two could be covered, Don, Scott.
What, then when we talk about the multipurpose activity space, that's not so much for shows as it would be for recreational type events, whereas the two sheets of ice, one of which would get covered and provide for up to five thousand seats, that's where we would have venues that would draw larger crowds for entertainment.
Actually, it'd be about two thousand square feet. The one, there would probably be a wall in between the two sheets of ice, Scott. We're kind of breaking it up. That, I think that's what we kind of came to a conclusion. You'd have twenty-five, twenty-five hundred seats in one side where they probably would play junior A and things like that and, and youth hockey. The other side would be two thousand square feet or two thousand seats and would be, would be used for conventions, could be used for concerts, could be used for a lot of things. The other one also could be. I mean, you could put, you could put, a hard board goes down. They told us in Waterloo, they can put that board down in two to three hours.
The wall between the two sheets of ice, it's a permanent wall?
It'd be a permanent...
Okay, I, I'm understanding now, thanks. With the facilities that you visited and talked with, and even the presentation that we saw at the library a few weeks ago, nobody has tried to set an expectation that these things pay for themselves at face value on an annual basis. It seems like every one of them, we should expect some kind of a subsidy. The hope would be that the peripheral impact on the community brings more value than what we're spending on the subsidy side. Do you have a feel from the folks that you talk with, what we might expect as a community in terms of an annual subsidy just for operations for a facility of this size?
Just, just in, in Waterloo, and again, both of these complexes are apples and oranges. You know, they're, they're not, they're not what Mason City possibly would be. In Waterloo, and, and I, I think you guys all have breakdowns. Waterloo, as far as their ice arena, they, they, they come close to breaking even most years. Some years they lose, they lose twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars. But, in, in the budget that you might look at, it doesn't account for major improvements now. The city funds that through their city budget. And if I, correct me, any of you guys if I'm wrong, but I think it was about a hundred, they, they, they support that about a hundred and sixty thousand a year. City as far as maintenance, upkeep and things on that facility. But the actual operations, some years made money, some years they, they lost twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars. Albert Lee, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it was somewhere in the three hundred thousand range that they subsidized that, that, that operation. As far as Mason City, you know, it, I don't know where that would be. But one of the things that I really want to emphasize, and, and again, no one has told us that we're going to make money, we're going to break even. It's been pretty much, we're going to subsidize it. But just off the minute, up in Albert Lee in the summer on their ice program, they have, they work through the summer, they have hockey camps. They booked sixteen hundred hotel rooms for, for that summer during that time that these families came in with their kids for the hockey, hockey camps and things. That's what, you know, they told us. That would be huge to our community, our surrounding community, because I, I don't think there's sixteen, so you would know the answer to this, I don't think there's sixteen hundred rooms. Of course, that isn't all one week. That's two, some of they booked sixteen hundred rooms. That's a pretty big economic driver. Those kids have to eat, those families have to eat. So, you've got to look at the bigger picture and, you know, to, to say, yeah, it's going to cost money, but we are going to get some, we're going to get a lot of that money back through other avenues.
I think the, the initial capital outlay to build such a facility were to materialize doesn't scare me so much. It's easy for us to eventually have plans and put it into that. It's a tangible number, it's predictable. I think at this point, my greatest unease comes from the operational side of ledger because it's a huge unknown at this point in time. That's where we need to spend quite a bit of effort.
And I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure you'll ever get that.
Mr. Trump, please. Anybody else?
Interesting concept with two sheets of ice. I've been a hockey mom for many years and didn't really enjoy getting up at five AM in Waterloo, Iowa because we were in a hockey tournament and we had to be off the ice for a concert that day. Two sheets of ice would have cured a lot of their problems down there. Staying in hotels, we spent many dollars traveling, staying in hotels. And the hotel with this water park is kind of got my interest here because every year we go up to Wisconsin Dells. Yeah, it might be twenty below, but guess what? There's an indoor water park at the Kalahari Resort, three hundred and fifty bucks a night, up there for two or three nights. That's where my city dollars are going, not here. I really like this concept. I'm, I want to hear more. I would like to hear how much it's going to cost and things like that. And I know that's not what you're in this for, but I'm anxious to hopefully get staff rolling on this and hear some figures. So, thank you very much for all your hard work, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Silver. Who else? Mr. Aaron.
Again, thank, thank you to each and everyone here for the time and hard work you put into this and your presentation. I'm not, at this point, I don't know the cost and everything. It's not what this discussion is about, it's more about the purpose or what Mason City can use or need or utilize. The thing I like about this project, and I heard it from your presentation, is this would benefit the youth of Mason City and create a need there, create a quality of life that we currently don't have in Mason City. One thing I did like about what the Councilman Nelson was talking about is we haven't grown since the early sixties or late sixties, early seventies. And I, the reason I ran for council was because if we don't change what we've done in the past, we're going to continue to put on the path and go on. And even though we can't prove that this is going to be great jobs and those types of things, I think it is something that could help bring in future employment in Mason City. If you look at OSH, who just built a facility, they just landed, what was it, seventy jobs? Eighty jobs and I can't remember what the investment is on that community. So, I think that is something that could help attract future business in the future. So, again, I thank you for your time. Appreciate your comments tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ickey. Mr. Weir. I, I too want to thank you for all your hard work. I just have one question. Just curious, maybe it's a difficult question, I don't know. Were you, if you had opposed to the idea before you started? I know a lot of you got strong opinions on stuff.
I was just opposed as, as a whole. I just felt it was going to be a huge burden to the city until we started to leave earlier from some of the shareholders and some of the people that say, hey, we have to have something like this. I know as a parent myself, the Parks and Rec deal, you know, I haul one kid over to Roosevelt while their kid's playing at John Adams and a kid come home today, I made a three-point shot. Sorry, wasn't there, you know, I was over to the other game. And I know that's frustrating and it kind of discourages a lot of parents from saying, hey, I'm not going to sign you in for volleyball the same night your kid's playing baseball or whatever. So, I really thought that as we learned from the need and from some of these people, the potential use of it, I, I kind of lean more toward it. I, I'm still kind of in the middle as far as the financing part, the tax burden on the citizens. But as far as facility need, I kind of lean that way toward it.
I, I, you know, I was on the committee, when you were on the committee the first time around, Max?
Yeah, how long ago was that?
That was ten, fifteen years ago. We, we started talking about a multipurpose center. We, we didn't talk about ice at the time. You know, I think, I think now, it is a lot of money and, you know, we're going to pay, we're going to pay for it. But if we want to grow, I, I heard, I heard at the last council meeting, I heard a comment, Max, that I think you made, and a good comment. One of the reasons that what is called Cargill today, Sunny Fresh, is because the president and vice president of the company, he was here to do a horse, a horse thing. And he liked our community. He thought it was a great community, he thought he was impressed with the people. And it's one of the reasons, I'm sure it's not the only reason. I'm sure we gave him subsidies to come here, but that's part of business today. But, you know, that's, that's why we got him here. I think it's an opportune timing, in fact, and we didn't, we didn't talk about this. But, and I think most people know that out of the ice arena, they're going to have to make a major investment to upgrade their facility here pretty soon. And I mean, it's substantial. It's, you know, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars to re, to redo the floor and, and the system there. That's what's been told to us. You know, if we're going to do something, I think now is an opportune time with, with that idea. Instead of putting that money out there, one of the other things is, if the ice were downtown, or wherever, I say downtown, that's my record, Scott, that's mine. If, if the ice, the ice was out of the fairgrounds, out of that building anyway, they would, they would see, one of the things that they hinted as we talked with their group is, they would probably get more income off that building because they would be able to store horse events and more other events. So, in some ways, it's, you know, there's a lot of factors that really need to be looked at when determining, you know, you can look at the cost, whether it's fifteen, twenty, thirty million dollars. There's a lot of other factors that will make our community a better place and, and pay more.
Mr. Butler, did you change your mind or did it just experience?
No, I went into it pretty much with a neutral, you know. But one thing I thought, one sheet of ice. If we were to vote on it for one sheet of ice, I, I wouldn't vote for it because through our discussions and through interviews and so forth, it needs two sheets of ice, period.
One more thing, did, I do have one more question. It's really, really important. Did you take into consideration, I heard you earlier talking about Waldorf and that they're holding off to see what we do down here? I've heard that before, I just don't, I haven't got it confirmed. How about the Diamond Joes? Did you take that into consideration at all, the things that are happening up there and the things that have the potential to happen up there? And that that could be, if, if we didn't do something? And you did mention, I think, that we are the regional community and we could lose that status. Did you guys discuss anything that's happening at Diamond Joes?
We've, we've talked about that, Max, and I think we two of us have, have our opinions on that. I, in my opinion, and I know I'm doing a lot of talking, and I apologize. But I think, I think, I was on the committee as to whether we bring to a vote the, the casino. And we, we brought it to a vote and unfortunately, in my opinion, unfortunately, it's up in, it's up in Northwood. If, if, this could be up there, you know, if we don't do it down here. We do it down here, I don't think they'll do it up there. You know, I, they're smart business people, they're not going to duplicate something and, and compete with us.
And that goes with the water park too?
Yeah, and I think they want to be good neighbors. They've shown that and supported things down here in, in our community. And so, I, I think that's a big factor that we need to look at. need to look at and consider being up there, when we lose more tax revenue, we lose sales tax revenue, we lose possibly hotel revenue, so...
So you, you are, you, you do have a concern?
I do.
All right.
Anyone else want to add to that?
I think, I think it's a great concern as well, we may have the, the funding and the, the resources, and I think it could be a possibility for sure.
Anybody else? Share the mic, please. I know that Mr. Yashewski'd like you to share the mic there.
I know that when I first came on this committee, I was opposed to two ice services, but having seen the situation where it is out of the North Iowa Fair, with the age of that ice and having to replace it, and it could cost up to a million dollars to replace it. And looking at it and doing some figuring, that, how many years they can rent ice before they would have to use up that million dollars that they would put into it, and at the same time, they would not be paying for maintenance or anything, or anything for the facility other than rent. And I was surprised when they came to the meeting, I thought they would be opposed. When they had the interviews, they would be opposed to this, but they weren't.
I would move to response. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, and it asks you some of your, fifteen or, some of the fifty, you can wait later. I, I'd like to know, and we put three of you on the spot, but the three did not raise their hand about going to the vote of the citizens. May, may we have an explanation for you?
I, I guess I'm having trouble understanding why we do that. This committee was not set to determine the financing.
But there was a question.
I understand, but a vote of the citizens is one financing mechanism, and I think I believe, you know, there's numerous, numerous mechanisms to finance, so I don't have a poll this committee necessarily.
Okay, I'll, for sure. To continue. I, Pete referred you to Diamond Joes, no offense to you, Councilman Weaver, but you know, if you look at, at the Diamond Joes, and you're, what, eight years out in Worth County, right? Eleven. Eleven years. How long, why does that fall in? You know, if you look, look at the census, Northwood is not grown, crippled. The county, that's it, is not grown. So much, and there's how many people the other day, I, it was a, thousands, there's no growth. They come, they gamble, they leave. So, and that's kind of my issue with, with the Diamond Joe was brought up. I think Mr. Trout probably speak to it, but you know, we have a commercial tax issue being debated right now on the state capital building. If that thing passes through the senate, you know, what, what was the final figures going to cost our state if we're not reimbursed? Seven million, am I correct, Bernard, does that fall?
It's about two point five million after five years, and then it would be forever after that.
Yeah, a significant amount of money we could dilute in, in tax revenue, which the burden we put on obviously a commercial that we have brought on homeowners. A tax issue, again, my point is cost of taxpayers' community. So that's the two issues I had. I just think it'd be wrong, and, and I didn't like to vote three-three, not to have a referendum. I, I think it's taxpayers' dollars, and our taxpayers should have a strong voice, but we'll see how that pursues down the road. But thank, by the way, I, I think I sent you all a letter, thanking you for your dedicated volunteer service. I appreciate it, this committee, this council appreciates it. A lot of time has been spent, and I want you to know, I appreciate it. Always a brief in some of the comments or the reports, but you know, we have a great community because of volunteers like you that put forth an effort and, and a voice in this community, so God bless you, and I appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you very much.
I also want to make one. Go ahead.
I just want to share that we worked really hard not to be an individual, and not to have our own opinions, and not to have, we really tried to work as a team, and we really tried to focus on just the goal and just the mission. And so, I didn't raise my hand, because to me, there's too many questions to be answered to know to raise my hand. That's me personally. So I'm not against it, or for it, I'm for gathering more information and more research, so I can make a better and informed opinion or decision. But to us as a group, we worked really hard to try to focus on needs, define needs, things that we know that are currently not being met, things that we know that we could fill an existing void now and within the next ten to twenty years. So we also talked very diligently about not taking Peter to PayPal, not taking from one existing facility, and transferring that business to another facility in a competition, competition way. So we really tried, again, to focus on a need that currently is not being met, and that is, in, in my opinion, that is why we came up with the thoughts that we came up with, because it was clearly showcased to us very early on, that these are needs, that the community is not producing adequate facilities or adequate results for these groups. So, please don't think that silence is confirmation, silence in this case is just silence.
Yeah, and I appreciate you making all those points, I was just going to add, for the, you know, for the public face to say there, this is just about demand, this is just about more to the needs. Financing, as I believe this was later mentioned, there's multitudes of methods that, you know, can be used to finance this project. The one thing I know is that if this is going to be general obligation bond, geo-bonded, that, that goes to a vote of the public, and that's, you know, that's just the law. So, if it is geo-bonded, that is one of the mechanisms it's used, I believe it's one over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, seven over seven hundred dollars goes to vote of the public, so.
Anybody else?
Just, I, I did take three minutes.
Actually, you did, but we'll, we'll come back, we'll come back.
Well, it's the first time you use most of my time.
We'll come, we'll come back, we'll make sure everybody gets it.
Sorry, Tim, you use most of my time.
Mr. Perfect.
Sue, you did a great job, and for the very reasons you just articulated, really, there's nobody in the community that's in any kind of a position to make any kind of an informed decision. You guys have done an outstanding job of defining the facility that best needs, that best meets, has the potential meeting the collective need of the community. And I thank each and every one of you for doing that, and I guess my pledge to you would be, if a facility's going to move forward, I'm committed to two sheets, two sheets of ice. I appreciate the perspectives that each of you have taken on that. But as I sit here listening, I'm trying to, trying to process and understand what the next logical steps would be. For this to be a meaningful dialogue in the community, we need to get to a point where we understand the initial cost for construction and then the long-term cost for operations, and we're probably going to need some help doing it. And what I need to hear from you as I process this, is tell me a little bit about the relationship between a water park and the multipurpose facility. Can one, and let me, let me be specific in the question, can one function without the other? Could we have a water park with no multipurpose facility, or could we have a multipurpose facility and no water park? And based on the answer to that question, if, if they feed off of each other, which comes first? My suspicion would be the multipurpose facility. And how deep would we get into feasibility studies and the potential for moving forward before it would be time to start this feasibility study, which you identified for, for the water park, which I think you had a figure of about fifteen thousand dollars?
Well, I'm going to start, I'm going to start the answer, and then Sue will finish. Definitely, the, the, the convention center, multipurpose center, I think comes first. I think that's what drives a private individual to come to Mason City, build a hotel and build a water park, because he sees that this thing's going to be full of people coming for tournaments, coming for concerts, they're going to want to steal a night, they're going to bring their kids, they're going to want, the kids want to go to the water park. I, I have a lot of friends, I personally have never been to a water park, so I speak not as an authority there, but I have friends who go to water parks all the time, and it's nothing for them to spend a thousand dollars for the weekend to go to the water park, take the kids, eat, stay in hotels, and enjoy. Scott, you have about fifteen questions there, but I, I'd like to just divert from that just for one second and give you just kind of an idea. I've been very involved over the years, I'm not, I'm not anymore, but with Mason City Youth Baseball. And many of you know, we used to have a complex, the baseball fields all over Mason City, you know, and we, as, as a group, we, we went back and forth as to whether we should build a complex, could we afford to build a complex? You know, a lot of them, no, we'll never be able to do it, we can't do it, we can't afford it. Well, we made a determination one day that we were going to build a complex, and we went out and we raised money to do it. This is small tokens compared to that, it was about a five hundred thousand dollar investment. But I can guarantee you, Mason City has benefited from that, from the tournaments, there's two tournaments held every year, and approximately thirty-five or forty teams, probably more, come in to play in this tournament, they come from different places. A lot of teams are from the North Iowa area, a lot of them from Minnesota, Wisconsin, Nebraska, they come to play in these tournaments, and you know they stay here in Mason City, you know they eat. If, if a developer were to build a park, a water park, I know where they're going to stay. They're going to stay there, because when they're done with the hot games during the summer, or they get rained out for a day, or an afternoon, they're going to go stay there, they're going to spend a lot of money, parents here hopefully won't go downtown, out to our malls and spend money also. So, I'm going to stop there and let Sue answer the part about the water park, because she, she's the expert there.
I'm no expert, I'm just the one that took on a lot of the calls to contact the organization that does feasibility studies, as well as a construction firm, an engineer firm, as well as water parks individually, to see what information they would be willing to share with us. So I can only share with you what was shared with me, and hopefully we can at least make some conclusions using that information. It is, it is our understanding that an ice facility can survive on its own, and we have definitely heard that there's a defined need. So with that being said, I think one of your questions is, which might come first? We know that it was shared with us, and as Jerry shared and, and others have shared, there's a significant amount of improvement that need to be made at the existing facility today. So there is definitely a very strong timeframe that we need to be in great consideration, so that we take advantage of helping them during their need and maybe being able to utilize fundings to help move forward. So that would be the answer to that question. On the destination water park, according to what they shared with us, is that water parks do not perform well on their own, they tend to not perform well on their own. So I guess my understanding to the answer to that is, yes, it needs something more. The reason why the water park was a part of our conversation, and, and Chabett Sonny wasn't here, because he truly is the person that said, Wisconsin Dells, and he named similar, several examples, really truly define themselves and reposition themselves for longevity, for visitor spending, by redefining themselves using the indoor water park destination philosophy. So that's what kind of piqued our interest to do more research, and also to the concern that Mr. Nelson had also talked about, the saturation of another hotel, adding another hotel complex, and again, saturating the market and taking Peter to PayPal, so to speak. So the concept was, if it is deemed to be feasible, and if it's deemed to be appropriate, that a water park would complement ice facility, the ice facility would complement the water park, creating an energy for success, but also too, we would also create a destination type of activity where folks would come here just for that purpose, trying to ease the saturation of a hotel lodging situation being added to the existing pool of hotel rooms. So it was three-part is the reason why we considered it, was because, again, for the reasons that I just said, we were really trying to help drive and also yet be mindful that the city, we do not want to burden the community in any way, that they, they would not be able to reap those dollars back. And so the water park, being a part of the hotel developer's responsibility, would provide the hotel developer the opportunity then to be able to see some kickback. But also too, if I can expand just a little bit, the water parks that we looked at actually were built beyond capacity for just the hotel complex. So it actually was built so that you could either come in and stay and be a guest at the hotel and be a water park guest, or you could just come in and be a water park guest, which allows the citizens of the communities to partake in it and be active within their investment. But also too, for other hoteliers to be able to package additional opportunities and packages, so that they too could reap the success from these type facilities, it just would maybe provide a different rate structure or different amenities, so they still could remain competitive within the existing community. So that was kind of our strategy when we were looking at it, and the folks that I visited with were very excited and very enthusiastic about learning more, because right now, it was shared with, with us that really, there is no true destination water park, indoor water park in Iowa, at the level that need, that they perceive could and should be able to be reviewed to determine whether it would be feasible. So, our target market would be great, really, we're looking at Minneapolis as the closest one to us. The other water parks, according to their definition, in Iowa, a few sort of borderline are destination, but the majority of them are hotels with water features and lights.
Thank you, Ms. Armer. Anybody else? Silver.
I would like to respond to Councilman Nelson's comment in regards to the fact that Northwood hasn't grown up there, Worth County in general. That's my hometown. I am keeping pretty good tabs on what is going on up there, and I do not believe that they are losing population like Mason City is here in Saratoga County. They are gaining, it's maybe not that much, but they're gaining in population, and we're not, we can't, we don't have breaking rates on that. They have students who graduate out of Worth County and get money to go to college, and I don't think I have heard Kaplan or NIAC or any colleges here in this community complaining about those areas where they're coming down here and signing on as students. You can live up in Northwood or Worth County, wherever you're at, drive to Mason City, you don't have to come down here to stay, but don't tell me they're not staying here and spending money and things like that. And then along with all of that comes the monies that the casino distributes up there to the various businesses, and they have had a hotel that they added on up there, they've, they've done various aside programs, upgrades to buildings, you know, all of this increases tax dollars. They offer, you know, home buyer incentives, they do all kinds of things to attract folks in there, but like I said, they're, they're not leaving, they're staying. And to me, that's important, because we, the 2010 census just came out, and we lost, what, three thousand people? I think that this would be a great compliment to Worth County, if we could get something of this nature down in here, and if Waldorf is waiting to see what we do, there's Mabo County that could be attracted over this way as well, staying here, spending money in our community. I think it looks, looks pretty good in my eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Yeah, as soon as we, as soon as we come around, we got Mr. March, Mr. Ickey, and Mr. Weaver here before we go next round.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I just, because you corrected, was schooling Mr. Nelson, I just want to correct one statement you made. Maybe I heard you wrong, but, you know, I get accused a lot of being the boogeyman, and we certainly have lost three thousand people in Mason City since the last census, it's nowhere near that. I hate to have that figure get out there, you know.
Anyway, Sue, or anybody else, did you run across any place that had two sheets of ice and a water park, destination water park? Is it? Is it, was there any examples?
The engineer and design firm alluded to one that they were working on, and some others that they had worked on, and I tried to connect with those, but I wasn't able, unfortunately, I mean, information isn't very forthcoming, they see, you know, they're somewhat tight-lipped on some of this stuff, so they, yes, there are, but I was unable to visit with them when I want.
So you don't know where any exists, whether it be a double sheet of ICE or destination water park?
I don't know about double sheet of ICE, I do know that they mentioned several examples, and again, I tried to connect with them, that had ICE, and that was where the engineer and the design firms talked about how ICE can be cooled, and how ICE is cooled and the heat rises, and how they can work off of each other utilizing, you know, that opportunity. So I know that it is done, I know that they...
You just don't know where.
I do know where, I did get a chance to visit with them.
Where, where was that at?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can capture my notes and send that to you, but they did share that with me, they did share examples.
I think if I just Google two sheets of ICE and destination water park, I'll find it.
I don't know about two sheets of ICE, but I know they talked about ICE slash water park connected facilities.
Well, I think the consensus of your committee is two sheets of ICE.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I don't know if there is a true example...
And he's a two-sheeter.
Yes. I don't know if there's a true example of two sheets of ICE and a water park, but I know that there is examples of ICE and water park.
You can see what I'm saying, can't you, two sheets of ICE and a water destination park?
Yeah, I, again...
There's only one Grand Canyon.
As a committee member, we definitely agree on two sheets of ICE, we definitely see that as a need today, and also a need tomorrow.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Brady?
I'll just make a brief comment. Again, I think we got a little bit off track. Thank you again all for your time and the work you put forward, and I know this was more about the need that was, if we decided to move forward, and I think we got a little off track, so, thank you again for your time. I think before any of this moves forward, there's going to have to be a whole lot more discussions, studies, and things, before we even come close to making a decision, so, thank you.
Yes, my, I, Mr. Marcer.
Okay, Mr. Nelson.
Why are you refusing to put it up? By the way, Janet, my cousin, Todd Nelson, owns and operates Carri in Wisconsin Dells. He opened up three years ago, another huge water park in Sandusky, Ohio, and I believe he's working on the third out east. So I guess that maybe I'd contact my cousin, and he probably should know a lot about water parks. So, but you'll probably never stay there again, now that you know he's my cousin. Thank you.
Don, can you come here and build it?
You mention my name, you get half price.
Anybody else?
I'll say, folks, thank you, it's been, it's been wonderful, we really enjoy the work that you, that you put forward, and I don't think we can say it enough, as mayor, as council, I think if this happens, this would be a pretty dynamic project, in a whole lot of ways, we're not even into the financing, we don't even know. But when one looks at the scope of the whole project, and you can see, if it is located downtown, how it would benefit and complement all those entities, help the fair by bringing hockey off, off the axe, and letting him recapture that revenue for six months, take advantage of the opportunity, potentially could be up there north of the casino and not let those dollars go away, it's, it's, it's pretty difficult to not agree with your conclusions about the demand that is there. So, we'll move forward and see if the, what the costs look like, what the financing look like, what the scope looks like, and see how everybody concludes to move forward. I'd like to just give you guys all a big round of applause, and we really appreciate it. We will have a listing post on June 2nd at 6:30, June 2nd at 6:30, then we'll adjourn the special meeting of the city council here in a few minutes.